Good evening, everybody. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg. Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Here.
Yes, yeah.
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 10:4-6 at Sec., notice of which was sent to the record and the Star Ledger, and was posted on the municipal bulletin board.
Roll call, please.
I just did, I did it backwards, I'm sorry.
You did roll call, okay. Flag salute. Would everybody please rise for the flag salute? I could, you'll get my ear. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, there are no proformations and/or presentations tonight, so we'll go right to the manager's report, please.
Approval of the minutes.
We do have approval of the minutes. Approval of the minutes for the current regular meetings of August 22, 2017. I need a motion, please.
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg. You were absent.
Fifteen.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia, you were absent also. And Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Okay, and now for the manager's report. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, and invited guest. City Manager's Report for September 12, 2017. Sanitation. The end of double pickup ended, I should say, August. September 1, the city has nixled, emailed, blasted, and posted information on our website. The two-way conversion of Main Street and State Street is still underway. We are making progress. We use multiple signboards to advise the motorists of Main Street and State Street. We certainly urge people to use caution driving through there because there are workmen and people out on the street through this construction, and they should expect delays and detours. Three, back-to-school, the supply drive. We have a box in City Hall lobby that is used for collection of school supplies. Local Hackensack churches will be handling, handing out these supplies to children in need over the school year begins, which has. The drive will end September 15, which is this week. Bergen County Open Space Grant Reward. The city has been awarded a grant for $42,000 for tennis courts. Obviously, we have some tennis courts that are in need of some reconstruction, which is a good thing. September Library Drive Month. The librarian will be held, will be in City Hall in the lobby on September 18 and the 26 from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. to sign residents up for library cards and offer information of different programs and services at the Johnson Library. Leaf Pickup. A reminder, all leaves will be placed in brown recyclable bags, no plastic bags. Each resident can pick up one free bundle of 15 bags at the DPW located at 120 East Broadway Street, second floor, starting October 1. I repeat, this is a program that is voluntary at this time, but obviously, the DEP is encouraging municipalities and residents to follow this procedure. And a really milestone for the city is the New Jersey Transit will be upgrading the railroad grade crossings starting September 11 at Main and Terrace, Euclid, Anderson, Atlantic, and Berry. I have an additional memo that came out that because of this repair, and the city ordinance has a relief from the city ordinance to do construction work because unfortunately for the railroad, if we held them off and said they could only do this work through Monday through Saturday, it would be disruptive of normal train services statewide because obviously, the train misses at one location or is delayed, it bumps all the schedules. So, it will be a hardship because there will be construction one Sunday for two crossings, and then again, one Sunday for the other additional two crossings. But prior to my tenure, I guess council would know better, this has been a condition and a problem for the city for many, many years, and we have finally persevered, and we're finally going to get this done. I wanted to take the time to identify that the Hackensack Police Department has had several Narcan saves. August 23, a police officer Franklin Bay and Special Police Officer Clay Peltra III responded to a possible overdose. Special Officer Peltra performed CPR upon the arrival. Once Patrol Officer Bay arrived, he deployed and administered Narcan. The victim received, revived, and was transported to Hackensack Hospital. On August 27, Police Officer John Knapp and Police Officer Daniel Fran Cavilla and Police Officer Brett McCarthy responded to a possible overdose. Police Officer McCarthy performed CPR while Police Officer Knapp and Fran Cavilla deployed and administered Narcan. The victim was revived and transported to Hackensack Hospital. And finally, Evelyn Reyes, a police officer for the city of Hackensack, located a victim in the rear of 214 Essex Street. The victim was suffering from a medical condition, possible drug-induced. Police Officer Reyes immediately called for the ambulance. The victim was transported to Hackensack Hospital for a short time and went into cardiac arrest and was revived via CPR and Narcan. So, these are three city saves by the Hackensack Police Department for people that unfortunately are using drugs but were revived and hopefully can get the treatment and the condition resolved for them so their life takes a positive step. But I certainly want to take the time to acknowledge these police officers and the efforts of the Hackensack Police Department for doing a great job. Thank you. And that would complete my report, sir.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we're going to start with Resolution 322-17, and to start that, I need a motion to remove this from the table so we can vote on it. Need a motion to remove it from the table.
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Okay, Resolution 322-17.
Okay, this is a resolution for the final adoption of ordinance number 22-2017, a bond ordinance providing for various capital improvements, buy-in in the city of Hackensack and the county of Bergen, state of New Jersey appropriating $1,860,000 therefor, and authorizing the issuance of $1,769,500 in bonds or notes of the city to finance part of the cost thereof. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and had its public hearing at the last meeting, so now we just need to vote on it.
Okay. I need a motion to adopt Resolution 322-17 ordinance.
All offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg. Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Hackensack County of Bergen and state of New Jersey that ordinance number 22-2017 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 323-17 is the same thing. I need a motion to remove it from the table for vote, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Resolution 323-17.
This is a resolution for the final adoption of ordinance number 24-2017, a capital ordinance of the city of Hackensack and the county of Bergen, New Jersey, authorizing for various improvements to city-owned buildings and appropriating $455,000, and providing that such sum so appropriated shall be raised from the fund balance in the Capital Improvement Fund of the General Capital Fund of the city of Hackensack. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and had its public hearing at the August 22 meeting, so now we need a motion to adopt.
Need a motion to adopt 323-17, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Hackensack County of Bergen and state of New Jersey that ordinance number 24-2017 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 324-17.
This is a resolution for the final adoption of ordinance number 26-2017, an ordinance to modify a utility easement previously granted to PSENG over a portion of Block 356, Lot 1, which is owned by the city of Hackensack. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Okay. Anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward. Yes, sir.
You need to open it to the public.
I need a motion to open to the public, sorry.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward. Yes, sir. Give your name and address to the clerk, please.
My name is Leon Sokel, the firm of Cullen &amp; Dyckman, 433 Hackensack Avenue, Hackensack. We represent Public Service Electric and Gas, which is the subject of this ordinance. We've had conversations with Mr. Kleiman, your attorney, as well as Mr. Ten Kate of Boswell, who represents the city with regard to engineering matters. We were asked at the last meeting when this ordinance was introduced, it was brought to our attention that there is a handicap curb cut at the corner of Central and Railroad Place, which was not done when the sidewalks and curbs were built after the project was completed. The company, it was brought to the company's attention, they've agreed to install the curb cut at their expense, and they're in touch with Boswell to get the details, and will proceed to perform the curb cut appropriately, permitting handicap access.
Okay. Fair enough. They will take care of all the permitting and everything as well. We're good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the audience like to speak on this ordinance? Seeing none, motion to close to the public.
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Need a motion to adopt ordinance 324-17?
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Hackensack County of Bergen and state of New Jersey that ordinance number 26-2017 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 325-17.
This is a resolution for the final adoption of ordinance number 27-2017, an ordinance adopting Continental Plaza redevelopment plan consisting of Block 512.01, Lot 6, Block 513, Lot 1, and Block 514, Lot 1. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
I have a motion to open to the public, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward. Seeing no one from the public, motion to close to the public.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Need a motion to adopt Resolution, ordinance 325-17.
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Hackensack County of Bergen and state of New Jersey that ordinance number 27-2017 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 326-17.
This is a resolution for the final adoption of ordinance number 29-2017, an ordinance to vacate a portion of Poor Street in the city of Hackensack County of Bergen and the state of New Jersey. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
I have a motion, please.
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward. Give your name and address to the clerk.
Good evening, Councilwoman Savo, Bodice Street, Hackensack. For what reason are we vacating a portion of Poor Street since we don't have any paperwork to see what the heck is going on here?
Do you want me to speak to it, or do you want to?
Thank you.
The portion of Poor Street that we're talking about is not in use by the city. It's a small triangle of land that is entirely surrounded by property owned by the owners of the Crow's Nest Restaurant.
Oh, that's where we are.
And right now, there is an entity that is parking vehicles on that property, I believe, from some sort of repair shop or service station, representing an unnecessary liability to the city. As I said, it's not contiguous with any other road. It just happened to be a leftover piece of city property from, I believe, before Route 17 was.
Is it like a paper street?
Was built. So, it is, well, it's paved, I mean, it's.
Paper street.
Yeah. But it's, but it's not, you know, certainly connected to the street grid. It's a very unusual piece of property in that respect, in that it stands alone and is completely surrounded by a single property owner. So, by vacating it, it will become, the property owner will have that, they'll be able to remove those vehicles, it'll release a potential liability to the city, and they'll pay taxes on it.
Are you selling it to them?
Well, you can't. When you vacate a street, it goes to the surrounding property owners. Normally, it goes half to the property owner on one side, half to the property owner on the other side, but I said it's an unusual piece of property that is completely surrounded by a single property owner. So, we'll just revert back to them, and it'll go on the tax rolls.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public like to speak on this ordinance? Seeing none, motion to close to the public.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Need a motion.
Need a motion to adopt, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Hackensack County of Bergen and state of New Jersey that ordinance number 29-2017 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 327-17.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 30-2017, an ordinance to amend Chapter 170 of the Code of the City of Hackensack, vehicles and traffic to allow for certain students residing in Hackensack while attending an institution of higher education in Hackensack to qualify for resident permit parking.
I have a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 30-2017 as introduced does now pass on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on September 26, 2017, at 8:00 p.m., or as soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council, and at such time and place all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk bein she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 328-17.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 31-2017, an ordinance to amend Chapter 170 of the Code of the City of Hackensack, vehicles and traffic, to add Marion Street as a residence-only on-street parking area.
I have a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 31-2017 as introduced does now pass on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on September 26, 2017, at 8:00 p.m., or as soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council, and at such time and place all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk bein she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 329-17.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 32-2017, an ordinance to amend Chapter 170 of the Code of the City of Hackensack, vehicles and traffic, to adjust to the no-parking time on the east side of Cleveland Street.
I have a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 32-2017 as introduced does now pass on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on September 26, 2017, at 8:00 p.m., or as soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council, and at such time and place all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk bein she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 330-17.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 33-2017, an ordinance to amend Chapter 175 of the Code of the City of Hackensack zoning, to prohibit in all zones the treating and/or disposing of any hazardous medical waste using a cold sterilization process.
I have a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 33-2017 as introduced does now pass on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on the September 26, 2017, at 8:00 p.m., or as soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council, and at such time and place all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk bein she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 259-17. I need a motion to remove it from the table, please.
Offer.
We can vote. I have an offer. Give a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia, did you second that?
Yes.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Resolution 259-17, please.
This is a resolution authorizing renewal of membership in the South Bergen Municipal Joint Insurance Fund.
Need a motion, please.
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Resolution 331-17.
This is a resolution authorizing change orders number 6, number 7, and number 8 for Brahma Construct for Hackensack Forming Arts Center renovation project.
I have a motion, please.
Offer.
Need a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Resolution 332-17.
This is a resolution authorizing the award of the New Jersey State Co-op contract for the purchase of a parking lot vac truck.
I have a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Resolution 333-17.
The resolution authorizing tax refunds.[1451.66]
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Resolution 334-17.
This is a resolution authorizing the award of contract for project management slash consultation services for the parking meter upgrade project.
Have a motion please.
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Resolution 335-17.
This is a resolution authorizing the award of professional service agreement to Desmond Inc. as a parking consultant.
Need a motion please.
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Resolution 336-17.
The resolution to rescind resolution number 298-17 authorizing tax collector to convert charges to property liens due to error in totals.
Have a motion please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Resolution 337-17.
The resolution authorizing tax collector to convert below charges to property liens.
Have a motion please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Sorry, resolution 338-17.
This is a resolution authorizing the tax collector to convert below charges to property liens for block 14, 418 lot 8.1.
Have a motion please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Resolution 339-17.
The resolution authorizing tax appeal attorney to settle the cases on the attached list dated September 6, 2017 that were scheduled for trial or settlement.
Motion please.
Offer.
Need a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
And last but not least, resolution 340-17, payment of bills.
Resolution authorizing the payment of bills.
Need a motion to pay the bills please.
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Okay, anybody having issues with the items on the consent agenda, there's five items on there tonight, it's pretty small. Hearing none. Continue with the consent agenda please.
Okay. The following items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion, any items requiring expenditure are supported by certification of availability of funds, any item requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda and the consent agenda items will be reflected in full in the minutes, including any exceptions and/or additions. Consent agenda consists of resolutions 341-17 through 345-17. 341-17 is a resolution authorizing the release of escrow for 32nd Street. Resolution 342-17 is a resolution authorizing the release of escrow for 137 and 141 Hopper Street. Resolution 343-17 is a resolution authorizing the release of escrow for 402 Williams Avenue. Resolution 344-17 is a resolution authorizing refunds for the Hackensack Building Department for overpayment of a filming permit. Resolution 345-17 is a resolution authorizing a raffle license for the Volunteer Center of Bergen County. We need a motion.
May I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as it was written?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Okay, need a motion to open to the public please.
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Anybody from the public who would like to speak, please come forward, give your name and address to the clerk, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Carolyn Davis, Stanley Place in Hackensack.
Name is Davis.
Um, I have just a couple of questions. What is going behind the old Woolworths or what is being constructed there? I was missed the last meeting, I don't know if it was mentioned.
Go ahead, Karen.
The Woolworths itself, there's going to be about 72 units residential over first floor of retail.
Okay, another condo. Okay, um, I noticed there's some streetlights out on First Street, um, one by First and Stanley, I don't know if it's been placed, but it's very dark at that corner anyhow, so I'd just like if someone take a look at those streetlights that are out. I know there's several on First Street, I noticed they were out. And my last question is with the school year beginning, has there any progress been made in a combined meeting with the Board of Ed and the City Council?
I'll defer to, uh...
Ted, do you have this, do you have a date scheduled yet, Ted?
We are supposed to meet, um, mid-September, I don't have an exact date, I will certainly follow up and have that for you, um, I don't have it off the top of my head. But there's been...
It's been going on for a long time.
Numerous dates and every, and it's like the little engine that could, I think we're there and then all of a sudden, something else comes up, but I'll get you an answer.
Okay, thank you, Ted. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Ruth Metzler, 463 Washington Avenue, Hackensack. We have a serious problem on Hudson Street and Mulnaki Road. Children are, more children are coming to school, Jackson Avenue School, from out, further out. There were no crossing guards there. The other day, I saw a woman, two children, in the crosswalk where she belonged, obeying the lights. The cars come up from River Street up Mulnaki Road, they don't stop for people, they look at the lights. Thank goodness, a police car was coming up. He had the, well, the power to stop anyway, but she was stuck in the middle until she could get across. That is a very dangerous place and there are more children having to walk to school from there. We need a crossing guard or something has to be done. I mean, I know you ignore that south end of Hackensack completely, and by the way, the planes going over Jackson Avenue School leave their tread marks in the roof. That's it.
Ted, can you check to see if that was a spot where we had crossing guards before? Never had them there. Well, let's have traffic do a study and if necessary, let's get a crossing guard there. Thank you.
Again, Catherine Salvo, Lord Street. Um, shame on this group for not notifying the people about that meeting in M&M. It wasn't just the people from the neighborhood layer, like you go and ask three of your friends who live there, it was the entire city of Hackensack. People are upset about this application and they made it known when they came here at the public meeting and told you that was a big, a burden for the taxpayers to spend all that money on a facility that had no parking and that was not, that we want to do something better. So it wasn't just for a few people or stack it with a few people that we know how great basketball is, because we know how great basketball is. It's just the idea that people who don't even live there couldn't believe that you would even consider that site to put, put this big building that houses 200 people with no parking, there's no parking to begin with. So shame on you all for not being transparent and not putting it on a website or advertising it or telling anybody what's, what's happening. Um, I'm very concerned about the location, 76 Main Street and Bridge Street where we had the fire back in April of 2015. We were told that that wall was going to come down August 1st, it's still up. Um, I'm, I'm really disappointed with a lot of people on this council because when the wall fell for the third time, and Mrs. Canestrino promised me that it wouldn't go up again as a grandmother and a mother, I'm very disappointed that it went up again. This wall is three feet on public right of way and every time I pass, I cringe because I see people stepping out into the street because they can't walk on the, on the sidewalk because it's not big enough, so they have to literally walk in the street and they're going to get whacked and somebody's going to get killed and it's unnecessary. This is the only location in the city of Hackensack or the state of New Jersey that hasn't filled a hole after the building's been demolished. And I want to commend the people on Essex and Fair Street, they took that enormous building down, leveled it and put a fence up all in the same day, or two days, whatever. This thing is, is two years pending, what, April 2015, and that wall still hasn't come down, it fell down three times, it's been waterlogged from, um, from being there because it's not exterior plywood, it's been hiding between artwork, which I'm a great lover of art, but that's not how you're going to hide a wall, it's got a big hole behind and the reason why that's on the right of way is because the hole is there and they can't support the wall. So I don't understand why, why we give people for grass that hasn't been cut, nobody should, nobody should listen to the building department, give them 10 days and we gave this guy three months to get the wall down. The building came down overnight when it, when it had a fire, but three months to get a plywood wall that got blown down three times and I still see it up. I'm very disappointed with this. I need an answer or, or some kind of...
I'd love to give an answer if you find him.
I'm just very, very disappointed.
Is it okay to talk because I don't want to cut into your time?
Well, you're going to, well, you stop the clock when he talks then. Well, Kathy did with the airport, she gave him an 10-minute answer with the airport. All right, so you're going to tell me that you're fining him every day?
Yep.
All right, and that's what you're going to tell me?
No, you finish and I'll explain this entire thing.
All right, I'm going to finish, okay. See, because then I can't answer because he's telling me we're going to fine him every day, which still, we should take it down and do like you did on those two pages of what we do for the city of Hackensack, we cut the grass and give them the bill. We should take the wall down because it's a safety hazard and just let them pay for it. Because you're going to tell me you're fining him every day. Okay, I'll let you talk.
Okay. As we've had a conversation, let me explain this whole thing so hopefully we come to some clarity and we don't have to keep revisiting this every time that we speak. 76 Main Street had a fire now two and a half years ago. That fence was put up with a promise that it would only be up for six months and that it would be removed. So two and a half years has expired. The new city manager, me, arrived on the scene and this project was there. So the disagreement that you and I have almost hourly is that why was the property owner given 90 days? Because you can't take a city policy that was never enforced for two and a half years and wake up some morning and say, oh, we're going to fine you $1,250 every day without any pre-knowledge.
Well, it's a safety hazard, you should do it in 10 minutes.
Let me?
Okay.
Please. I will never interrupt you, I would just love to finish this because this is where you and I have our problems. So based on the 90 days, there was a meeting, all the, the city officials were present for this meeting. We went through all the requirements that this property owner would have to do. He was given 90 days to address those issues, get a contract, remove the fence, fill in the hole, and get this done. I had a private meeting with him and had a conversation with him to reemphasize that two and a half years has expired and there is no more grace period. So on August 1st, that party was supposed to have a contract. There was no contract. So I then called him again to find out, what is the process and what are you doing to address these issues? And currently, there was a, a written proposal from a contractor but not a signed agreement. So since that day, Alirelli, the zoning officer, gave him a five-day grace period. So that took him from August 1st to the 6th. From the 6th of August, that party has been received a complaint every day of the week, Saturday, Sunday, every day, for not following and complying with the city code. He had a court date of last Wednesday. He went to the judge, appealed to the judge for an attorney. If you read the code, you can't take any action until it goes before a judge and some summary has been decided, either he's going to plead guilty, not guilty, accept the charges, resolve the penalty. So none of that has occurred. So now he has another two-week extension from the judge, which he's required to do so he can get legal counsel to represent him, and here we sit. In the interim, he continues to receive a fine and penalty proposed from the city code for violation up until he goes to court. There is no additional action that the city can take because there is an ordinance and a process. As the city manager, I'm required to follow the city code. It's not a personal thing, I wish it was resolved, I understand that the public safety and the traffic safety conditions that that brings, I'm a retired chief of police, I understand how that affects people. Obviously, the city wants to make it right, but we also don't need an additional lawsuit either. So the city manager has to follow the city code. And that's exactly what I'm doing.
Can you tell everybody, how much money a day, what are we looking at?
$1,250.
Can I offer this at the end to make sure it's paid?
You can do anything, why? I, I don't have anything to hide.
No, I just want to make sure that, that we, yeah.
So as soon as I know the court date, I'd be more than glad to, to give that to you, you can watch the process, how it turns out from there or what the judge decides, I have no influence.
In the meantime, I really hope nobody gets hurt because you're, you're, there's a liability here. It's more, more liability getting sued if somebody gets whacked and somebody getting sued because you didn't follow the right procedure. And everybody else that gets, that gets fined from the city should not do, and do anything about it.
I think, Mrs. Salvo, that I have expressed, that I have followed...
We're well past five minutes and we agreed on no back and forth.
I have followed the procedures. Thanks. Thank you, Mayor, sorry.
Give an inch, take a mile.
Regina DePasco, Parker Avenue. Uh, Mrs. Canestrino, you said at the end of the, um, public comments that it was nice to hear, nice, something nice. And, you know, of course, you support the Prospect Avenue people, you've been meeting with them. Uh, if you did support the, the people with the M&M Recreation Building as much, you might be hearing a little more nice from us. You know I was involved in that, you know Kathleen was involved in that. We got no notice, none, zero, nothing. Not, no notice of a meeting at the M&M, no, no notice that the agenda, the Cow agenda, like I said, was hidden, it was not in the same place on the homepage, it is now because I sent some emails on that. But you would be hearing nicer things, we got the same support that this group has been getting, okay? And I said before, and I'll say it again, this building is a First Ward's LTAC, it will be as devastating to them as the LTAC would have been to Prospect. So I don't know why we're not getting the support, they aren't getting the support on that, okay? I don't, I don't know why. Um, but you would hear nice things if you, if you gave support like you give to the Prospect Avenue people. Um, I, another thing, as far as responsive, Ted, I sent you an email, I talked to you in public about it, sent you a follow-up email about a private company running their business on city property. I got nothing, nothing, and it's been a couple of months, several months.
I have sent you two email responses.
I did not get, did not come to me, did not come to me, I got nothing.
I'll forward both of them to you tomorrow morning.
Okay, I, I got nothing. Um, okay. Uh, again, I question the PR company. Is he a spokesman? Is he PR? They're, they're two different things, they are. Um, and why would they have knowledge of an internal affairs investigation? That is beyond what they should know. They're not city employees, they're a vendor, and for the comments that they made, like I said, they were biased, they are beyond their scope of their employment as a vendor, not employment, they're not employees. Um, and I, I think it's irresponsible, absolutely irresponsible, that they should have any knowledge and if they have no knowledge, why are they speaking on it? Okay? Um, again, the agenda, it, so you're telling me it's the environment, not finances, but we have a right, I mean, why do I have to be standing there looking through the book as you're going through it? You know, is, that's, that's, that's nuts, it just, it's not right, it's not right to do that to the residents, okay? Maybe these guys from Prospect Avenue, you guys want the detail, maybe you'll do it for them, because you bend over backwards. The rest of us, it's, yeah. Um, the Narcan saves, I think that is fabulous, however, that's not the root, not getting to the root of the problem. That's great, I know three other towns in Bergen County have the heart program, are we promoting it? Are we directing people? Are we doing anything to get people into a recovery program? Narcan is great, but if you have a heart attack and you, you use a defibrillator and you still keep eating the fried foods, it's not going to do any good. So we need, if you had three in what, a week, 10 days? We got a problem, we got a problem, and if we do not address the problem, then, you know, all the Narcan in the world isn't going to, you know, we don't have enough, we don't have enough Narcan. Okay, we need, we need a, a program, we need PR on that, okay? Can our PR guy work on that? That would be fabulous, you know, not just development, that would be fabulous if we had PR on the heart program, on, on drug recovery, so we don't have to say we did so many Narcan saves. We can say we have people in recovery, okay? And I'm looking forward to getting that email because, um, I never saw it. Oh, and there's no street fair this year?
No street fair this year, no.
Okay, could somebody answer my question about the, um, PR company having knowledge of internal affairs?
I will.
I don't know, um, I don't have the press release in front of me, so I can't tell you in detail what part of this that you're concerned, um, I'll either get the press release and call you tomorrow.
I will say this, as part of their contract, I believe they serve as spokesperson for the city.
That is accurate, that is, and that was in the RFP.
They are spokesperson for the city, but as far as having internal affairs information, But as far as having internal affairs information, I can tell you what, I learned a lot more about this case by reading the newspaper than I did from our PR firm. So does the newspaper have all this information?
Our PR firms quoted twice in two articles. That's where they got the information from.
Now, a lot of this information, a lot of this information is also obtained through, through the newspaper.
He shouldn't have the knowledge.
And the prosecutor.
I, I have to tell you that there was a lawsuit filed, and that information from that lawsuit included the information that was quoted by the newspaper and the press. And I think our reporter will confirm that. There is no dispersment of information coming from the City of Hackensack. That does not happen.
The article, two articles. Paul Swobinski, Phil Swobinski, both quoted in articles. Both.
Okay. But that doesn't mean they have inside information that involves internal affairs.
Their quotes, it, it heard that.
Well, maybe.
It needs to be looked into, okay?
Maybe your reference is, is that, but I have to tell you, the information that came from that newspaper article came from the information that was released when a lawsuit was filed.
No, that was biased. No, it's not. We're looking to sever them. This is what Phil Swobinski is quoted as saying.
Yes, sir.
Rich Serbo.
Mr. Serbo, how are you?
Spring Valley Avenue, Hackensack. You know, there's been just a, a, you know, just a forgetful attitude towards the traffic on, on Spring Valley. I, you know, I, I spent a year on this. It's still absolutely horrendous. Buses are going 50 miles an hour on Spring Valley Ave. It's awful. It really is. There are so much heavy, heavy duty trucks and equipment going up that street. What the hell is going? It's, it looks like the only street in town. Okay? So everything is, is pushed towards Spring Valley Ave. There's no other outlets. There's nothing. I mean, you know, Ted, please, honest. We talked about this years ago. All right, I'll just start. I want to start by saying, I think it was Emerson that said, you know, money isn't everything, but when you have it, it's as sweet as roses. So let's talk about money and the money you spent on your election. I don't want to let that go. You spent $275,000. I took a look at where it all came from and like, you know, I, I don't, I'm going to have to look it over many times because, you know, can, can businesses, people doing business with the city give money to the candidates running? I, I, you know, I'm, I'm sure that that's allowed now. Can employees of the city give money to, to you or the candidates? And, and so I thought there was a lot of questionable contributions, and I'd like to go over that. Now, it may have been all okay with the election board. Now, you know, you reported it and everything was sort of up to date and clear and this and that. But is it okay with the public? Okay? So we want to look it over. We want to look at who gave you money and we want to, we want to, we want to see if it passed muster with us. The election board, I think there's a, there's a way of doing it. You can put whatever you want on there and it's, it's okay with them as long as it's reported. There was a lot of out of town money and, oh, come on. Look, I want to look that over. We're going to talk about that for a long time. So I'm just putting you on warning here, okay?
Public record, sir.
Yeah, I know. It's public record, but it's, it's not discussed and it should be in the public eye. How many, how many people in the public are going to go look at that? How many? Not many. And so you could just let that go, you know, like, oh, there it goes, there it goes, you know? But we're going to, we're going to scrutinize that and we are going to look at it and we're going to bring it up in this meeting constantly. I am anyway. All right. Let's go back to things that happened, maybe last year or whatever. Whatever happened with the nonprofit status of the hospital? Can you comment on that when you get your five minutes? I don't, do you get five minutes, John? You might. Okay. But can you, can you comment on the nonprofit status and what the ruling was? There was a Morris Town ruling, I know. I don't know if there was any follow-up on that. And if, and if it's, naturally, that place is for profit. If it's not, who the heck is kidding who? Hackensack Hospital, Hackensack University Medical Center is not for, is not nonprofit. And you know it, and I know it, and everybody in this room knows it. So when that's changed over, are they going to pony up, as, as the word is used? Will they pony up and pay more taxes in this city for all those properties they have? Instead of, instead of having my taxes raised seven and a half percent? My taxes went up and the hospital gets to just, hey, we're nonprofit, you know, so we'll, you know, we'll send you some Band-Aids for like, you know, 400 bucks. So, look, I want to get back to that. There's been nothing said about that. You know, it's just, when things are forgotten, it seemed, oh, let's let it go. If it, if it's, you know, if it's not going to benefit us here, let's just let things go. But I'm not going to let that go also. So that's the, the money you spent, the hospital. And what about this naming rights thing that the hospital gets for the cultural stuff? Will you describe or can you discuss that also? And, and I'd like to.
Public record.
Yeah. I'd like to know more about it. It's, it's public record, so this is a public meeting. Let's discuss the public record, okay?
We will, we will address that in our comments, absolutely.
Can we, can we do that?
Yep.
We can do, we can do that? All right. Look, I, I don't want to be told my five minutes is up, so I'm done. All right? Thank you very much.
You have to stay if you want to hear it.
Oh, okay. Can I?
No, but no, you have to stay till, you always leave before we speak.
Well, I mean.
You can, you watch it on YouTube, I know. Next, please.
Good evening, Paul Nichols. I'm going to update you guys on what we did. Me and Councilwoman Van Rudenborg sat down, thank you, sat down with the county and went over some, a, a layout and game plans of what I spoke about last time with drugs after school, you know, in the parks and all that kind of stuff. So I, I actually accidentally showed up this morning and it's not until October 12th, which is good because I had another meeting after that. And then, basically, you know, that meeting today was pretty good. We went to this quarterly, I call it the quarterly, what is it, collaborative, they call it?
It's the Hackensack Outreach Collaborative.
That was pretty good. I mean, there were some things that, well, a little bit, I don't know how to explain it, but, you know, I'm, I'm just going to say that with the, one of the things I brought up in the, in the meeting, and I'll bring it up here again, and I always do this, is mental illness. And, you know, it's, one thing that, it, it is true, and maybe you guys, I would think every town should advocate and get to your legislator and stop Human Services from letting, you know, they're, just to save money, they're cutting back on the hos, the state mental hospitals and putting people in bad environments, you know? So it's, you know, there's, if one in four people suffer from mental illness, you know, you, you, there's going to be people with situations. And, and you know, we're the county capital and the old, we're doing really well. And I want to shout out to Captain Aquila was very, I was very impressed and very glad that he, you know, his advocating for mental ill, you know? But what I'm going to segue into with that is, there's a thing, and being the county capital, there's a thing that was amended on that bill S-1088 called Code Blue, which is, I know a lot of the residents have talked to me about it. And what it is, is OEM of Bergen County must have a coordinator that when the temperature reaches, I believe, freezing, have to locate the vulnerable in the county and offer and help to bring them to a safe place, whether it's a shelter or, you know, a hospital or wherever. And I think that's important to advocate for. And I'm going to go to the Freehold meeting tomorrow night, tomorrow afternoon, I should say, and speak about that too. Because, you know, we are the county capital and we have all the facilities and services here. One thing I do want to ask, I don't know much about this part of, of this kind of thing, with these nonprofit-like organizations that obviously takes away from tax revenue from the city, but is there, do you get credit of any kind of fund from the government? Like maybe state or federal government?
No.
Nothing whatsoever?
Not credit, no.
Or mon, nothing?
No, just nonprofit status, you're not taxed.
Right.
Which is your credit, basically.
Right. But I'm saying like if you have a.
About us of the city, do we get credit for having housed in Hackensack?
Yeah. Or a, or like a, if you were to have like transitional housing or supportive housing.
The only way we get credit is depending on where they were. If it was considered affordable housing, we'd count towards our, towards our co-credits, for instance, which is important.
Okay. All right, good. All right, well, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public like to speak? Seeing none, motion to close to the public?
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
This is Von Rudenberg. Do you like to say something?
Sure. I answered a little late. I'm sorry, I missed last month's meeting. We were away. But the rec program in town was phenomenal this summer. A big thank you to Greg, Rose and Frank for the end of year party. The kids had a great time. The counselors that they pick are just exceptional, exceptional high school kids, college kids, but they really do care about the kids that they're watching there. It's a really nice program. My son goes, so it's really nice to see the older kids interacting with the younger kids. It's a really nice time. Also, at the end of year event, the fire department, Hackensack EMTs were there showing the kids some of the, the trucks. And it was just really nice. They took time out of their day to do that. The DPW did a phenomenal job cleaning up after the kids. Those kids were pretty messy. There was watermelon rinds all over the place. So they did great. To Mr. Nichols, we, you know, it was a great brainstorming session we had with Ms. Foreman over at the county. I'm excited for some new things. I think it was, you know, I think we wanted to walk out of there with a concrete plan set, you know, set in place, but I think it was more brainstorming and seeing what we could do. But we'll both be at the meeting on the 12th and hopefully we get some more information and keep it rolling. I had my first meeting with the library, the Board of Trustees today. That went well. They have some great things going on at the library. If you guys haven't, you know, stopped by, they have book clubs, they have different, they have a back to school dance coming up for fifth to eighth graders. They seem very excited about every development and they have a whole game plan going on with their consultants of what they can do with the library. So they're, they're a really good group of people. I was excited to be able to work with them. I'm working with some people in the city right now, trying to set up some type of donations we can do for Hurricanes, Harvey and Irma. We're trying to work to see what the best route to go. First, we're thinking maybe a blood bank, but then maybe monetary. So once we figure that out, we'll try to put something on the website or get the message out there to everyone. What else? Thank you to Kathy and the residents for all the FAA work. It's, you know, it's very tedious whenever you're going up against the federal government. So, I mean, this is a, a big hill and to climb and, you know, they've been doing a really good job and I admire everyone's hard work and persistence. And I also had the honor of going to the youth police academy. I want to thank all the police officers and fire, firemen that really took time out of their, their week to, you know, help the young, young people of Hackensack and Maywood and Rousha Park. You could tell, you know, what a good time the kids had. They were, you know, just beaming at the end of the, of the week. And I, you know, I missed last month's meeting, but National Night Out was also a great, a really great night. It was nice to, nice to see everyone in the community out together. So a lot of good things going on. Thank you.
Thanks, Steph. I spent a considerable amount of time at tonight's Committee of the Whole meeting, going over FAA presentations from the last meetings that they've had and meetings that have continued over the past month or so with myself being very involved. So anyone who wants a recap or wants to see that, we post that on the website now. The minutes of the Committee of the Whole are now also being videotaped so you can, if you're interested in a long, rather, long discussion on, on where the FAA is going, please take advantage of seeing it on the website. And in, in brief, we're making progress. You know, the FAA is looking into two options and they plan to brief everyone further at the next quarterly meeting held at Teterboro in October, late October. I'm not sure of the exact date, but I'll keep you guys posted. So those that are interested, it might be worthwhile to attend that meeting. If not, Albert has created a link on the homepage of the website. So we're, we're maintaining some of our own information on the FAA literature. And as we receive it, we'll continue to update it there. And I think that's a great way to share information. Keep the phone calls coming. I was on teleconference with some of the folks yesterday and they said, yes, they've definitely seen an uptick coming from Hackensack. And it's important. They want to know. You know, they want to know when it's noisy, you know? We want to be reporting when we hear something that's out of the ordinary. Please, you know, pick up the phone, report it to them and have them follow through on it. That's what we can do right now until we, we hear more from them about the longer term solution. On the docket tonight, just a quick reference to Continental Plaza. I mean, wonderful to see that they're revitalizing those three buildings. I mean, they've been there, I think over, I think we talked about 40 years, over 40 years, John, do you remember? That mainly three towers, all office building, they're moving or consolidating it into two office buildings. And the third one, they're exploring different options of having some residential, some retail. They're even looking at considering a hotel on the back of that property, which, you know, we've talked for a long time, is, is very important to the city to have a hotel once again. So that was exciting that that was on here. News about a new parking consultant. You know, with all the changes in the city, it's very important that we structure and coordinate and upgrade a lot of our parking meters and, and mechanisms for managing parking throughout the city. So we're going to be very happy to welcome him aboard. A number of questions came up about the M and M building and meetings, et cetera. I think the council has been very, very responsive to the requests from the citizens. You know, went through the planning board, followed through on the request. We had our city planner go out and do an alternative plan, looking at, is there another viable option in the city? He did a comparative analysis. He presented it at the last Committee of the Whole. He presented it again at the planning board for their review. There was an informal meeting held in the first ward. I, I think that we, as a council, are being very open and forthcoming with that information. This is not something new. This is something that has been talked about now at council meetings and additional meetings over the, over the past few years. I look forward to seeing, I think it's going to be a wonderful addition to the city. And kudos to all of those. I know a lot of blood, sweat and tears from Dave and Leo, you know, went into this and I congratulate them on all their reference. Have a good night, everyone, and stay safe.
School has started back up. I'm humbled and honored to be able to say I took part in giving out over 800 book bags. I know that citizens and the residents really truly appreciate it. Last week, we had opening day for soccer, football. This week, we have our first home, junior home game where our cheerleaders will make their day feel. If you're not doing anything in the evening, please come out. As Stephanie said, we were honored, the 17th Annual Youth Police Academy. It was a great event for the kids to see what it's like to be a police officer and a fireman. Thank you for coming out. Good night.
Leo.
Thank you, Kathy, for your update related to the FAA. About to try to get some changes in the five path of all these planes around Prospect Avenue and the Hackensack Medical Center. For months, the city manager and myself, we've been talking about the railroad crossings. And finally, he took the ball and finally, we're going to get all the changes and all the particular streets are going to be nice and easy for the car to go over the tracks. Thank you, Ted. Related to the M and M building, and it's something like for years, people like David, John, myself, we got involved with the kids. And the only thing that we're looking for is facility where the kid can spend the time at nights or whatever. It's no question that education about drugs come from the house, the school, and the coaches and cell, they're acting like a parent with this kid when there are no places to go. And the only thing that we're looking for is for places where the kid can spend the time instead of to be in the streets. So these buildings, like the M and M building or the dome or whatever, is going to help us to try to get these kids away from problems. You know, we've been doing this for years. I, we see now police officers, engineers, when I go to the Hackensack Medical Center, kids that went through the program and now they are good kids, good citizens. And for the meantime, I was really, really proud last night with David. We were watching the soccer game between Ramapo High School and the Hackensack kids. And this particular Ramapo High School, for people that see the paper, they don't lose one game last year and the year before. The best team in Bergen County and the state. And Hackensack beat this guy 2-0. And they played beautifully under the lights here in the Hackensack High School. I was really proud about the program. Another thing that we are doing is we are getting some time truck donated by the Army. And I think I saw one truck today that cost the city nothing. Only 11,000 miles. And the only thing the city had to do is a paint job, four tires, and you got a truck for free. No, it's a guy with trucks. No, it's a truck for the department. Then we got a couple homers, I think two or three, they belong to the police department and don't cost anything to the city. So the police officer in charge of this program is going to the Army inventory and he's going to try to get for the meantime, garbage trucks, street sweeper, whatever we can get for free. And it's no question that we, as a city council, we try to look every corner of the city. We don't only look a particular area. We are all over. So to make this kind of complaints, it don't sense. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Leo. I'm going to trust the M and M building first. This M and M building is nothing, this is nothing new, this, what this building that we're talking about putting up. There's been renderings and talk of this building for over two years. There's been meetings. It's been shown to the public at meetings. There's drawings, numerous articles in newspapers, mentioned in numerous campaign literatures that this was going up there. This neighborhood was aware of it. All right? Not to mention speaking about it at a block watch meeting myself over in that ward over a year ago.
And you promised another meeting and didn't give it.
Never gave a secret meeting.
You promised another meeting.
Terrible. Terrible as you interrupting. Terrible as you interrupting. Parking at this building. I've been involved in city council for eight years, going to nine years. I've never had an issue with parking for the M and M building related to the M and M building. It's not our parking that's the issue. It's not the parking from that building that's the issue. It's everybody else wanting to use that parking lot that's an issue. And scare tactics, going to a church and telling the people we're going to take away their parking and doing all this and that, only puts the city in a bad place, in a very, very bad place as far as possible litigation goes. All right? It's not horrible. It's not their parking lot. If you go to Holy Trinity, no, it's not their parking, it's not that church's parking lot. And if you go to Holy, excuse me, Kathy. me Kathy, you go to Holy Trinity right now and look at their parking lot that's empty, with a big sign on it with a gate closed, parking for church and their school only, do they let the residents park there?
No.
No. Do we pay eight hundred thousand dollars a year to rent the school from them, and they come to us saying, "You can't build a building because we want that parking lot"? Doesn't work like that, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, it doesn't work like that.
The sign that says you can park there, the residents can park there, the sign is there.
And signs change Kathy, and so, so do times, and the times have come for this building to go up.
You're stealing it from them, you're stealing it from yourself.
Not stealing it from anybody, that is not a public parking lot for, for residents.
Right, but the sign is, you're stealing it, six million dollars, wasting money.
It's still, parking for that building itself has never been an issue, nor will it be with the new events. No, it does not belong to the neighborhood. Okay. Well, the scare tactics did not work, but the main, the main bottom line is, it was cost prohibitive to move the building somewhere else. We would be putting up the same size building we have now...
You don't need the building.
For more, of course you say that, you don't, you don't want anybody even moving into this town, so, excuse, let me finish, please.
We're gonna have to sue you, we're gonna have to sue you.
Go ahead and sue, sue. You're gonna sue the city for using its own property, go ahead, see how that works out. Mr. Sorbo, I'm glad you're still here.
Sir, I'm waiting for you.
Spring Valley, I will ask the city manager if we do have a, uh, one of the signs that we can spare once in a while, let's put it on there, because if those buses are flying past at fifty, maybe, maybe one of the cops can start giving them some tickets, and, uh, maybe we'll slow them down a little bit.
Yeah, that's posted for tonnage, uh, twenty years ago.
Right.
Right.
So, the issue is, is that a county, that's county, Spring Valley? It's a county road, so it's, it's, we're kind of in a, in a pickle there, but we can, we can enforce things.
Nation Picas, what is speed?
We can enforce, it's not our street, really, and, and...
So...
You really should go to the county about it.
The different nation, the county?
No, no, but they control that street, we, we, they have full jurisdiction over the speed limits and everything else on that street unless we try to change it.
During my tenure as the city manager, I had, you brought this issue up multiple times. So, the, the first, second, and third time, I've referred this to enforcement to the traffic bureau, the Hackensack Police Department, the Hackensack Police Department sends over a unmarked car, runs radar, they look for the vehicles, but weight limits are limited to local deliveries, so if there's a truck that's making a delivery, and they're going over through that section to get from one end of Bergen County to the other, and they can show they're making a delivery, they can't enforce it. So, you can post all the signs you want in the world, you can put up the speed limits, the, the Hackensack Police Department will, what we refer to in police work called selective enforcement, and they certainly will do so, but at the end of the day, what this council is trying to tell you is, because of its location and its, its connection to get to the other side of Bergen County, there's not a whole lot we can do about it, unfortunately, because the city has changed, and certainly the residents use that as a cutover because they're not gonna drive the long way around, because everybody is one big heck of a hurry here, but unfortunately...
Yeah, but it's getting worse.
I agree, that's why, but what, what we can do is try to enforce speed limit laws, reckless driving and stuff of that nature, so...
I have...
And that's the only way to dissuade, the, the one thing about if you're hitting bus drivers with tickets, the word's gonna get out, don't speed on, you know, they're, they're watching us on Spring Valley and Hackensack, don't speed there. So we might be able to slow them down a little, possibly. Um, sorry to interrupt you there.
No problem. So, I will make the, the referral, this is probably number four, to the Hackensack Traffic Bureau, and we'll have a police over there, and we will...
And it's from five in the morning until eleven, almost midnight, so it's five to in the morning.
Right.
And then...
Okay. The hospital, and I'm, I'm not gonna speak to Hackensack Hospital where I work, I'm gonna speak to hospitals in general across the state of New Jersey.
Right.
Um, back in, about two years ago, Morristown, the city of Morristown sued Morristown Hospital, General Hospital, um, saying they were not a non-for, not, not-for-profit hospital, and that they were for-profit based on what certain people working for the hospital were making. There's certain guidelines and thresholds on what people, CEOs, CFOs, people of that nature, administration can make, there's set guidelines for not-for-profit organizations on how much they can make. Um, that said, um, Morristown went to court, took them to court, Morristown, the city of Morristown won their lawsuit, uh, immediately following that, all the hospitals in the state of New Jersey flocked to Trenton, saying, you know, in a panic, what's gonna happen here?
Right.
And they put together a bill which they tried to push through senate, which basically, uh, was a bed tax of about two dollars and fifty cents per day per bed that would be paid to the municipality.
Right.
Which really was not a lot of money, it was two dollars fifty cents at Hackensack, that, I think it came out to like six hundred thousand dollars a year, which for a place that big is not a lot of taxes.
It's like beer money.
Yeah, right. So, that said, the governor said, no way, that's not enough, and he put it in his pocket, it's called a pocket veto, all right? And it's been sitting there, and we're waiting to see where that's going, as far as I know, I haven't heard any movement on it, but everybody's, you know, waiting for that to come out, because it's very important, and it's not just to Hackensack, it's to, you know, we have four major hospitals here in, in Bergen County, you get, or big hospitals, you got Valley, Hackensack, Holy Name, and Englewood, and, uh, you know, they're pretty big medical centers, so, all those municipalities are watching very, very closely. That said, uh, you know, we certainly could use the tax money from them, no doubt.
Absolutely.
Okay.
They're the second highest taxpayer.
Yes, and they, as far as taxes, they're the, they're the second highest taxpayer in the city.
First by taxes.
Mr. Sorbo, they, they are the second highest taxpayer in, in the city, right now, the hospital, so it's not like they don't pay taxes, they do pay taxes.
I know they pay some, but it's...
Well, they're still the second highest, you know, but you gotta remember, it's not just the hospital, you have all the schools, all right, all the colleges, you have all the churches, and the other big, the other big gorilla in the room's the county building, they pay no taxes either, all the property county owns. That's, that's why this Briski Street property that they sold where the DPW was, down going to River Edge, you know, they sold that, they're putting up a nice development, we're gonna, we're gonna reap the benefits from them selling their property by now collecting taxes on all those units, which is a big help to us, so, but, uh, there's a lot of, I, I would say about thirty percent of Hackensack is not taxable, if I had to do, do the math, you know, as far as buildings. Yeah, well, you can't, you can't, you know, how do you, you can't tax a church, you can't tax a, the nonprofit, even though, you know, that status is changing, you can't tax the schools, you can't tax your county building, so, you know, but these are, these are things that affect us tremendously here in Hackensack, having all those, because, you know, Millford doesn't have county buildings, Millford, I mean, it has some churches and schools, but they don't have hospitals and, you know, but big cities like us and Ridgewood and Teaneck and, you know, Englewood have these things. Um, I'm gonna bring something up real quick before I move forward, we lost a young man this week, Justin, what was his last name?
Demise.
Demise, uh, in his early thirties, he was a custodian at the high school, uh, very nice young man, he worked at my wife's school, Hiller School, for a while, she had nothing but praise for the kid, he was, he was one of the nicest young men, they said everybody went to him when they needed something because he would always do it for them, so he was a, he was a, a good guy. Unfortunately, he passed away in a car accident this weekend in, uh, in Patterson, and his services, um, are Sunday at New Hope Baptist Church on First Street at 5:00 PM, and the visitation will be from three to five, so if any of you feel like attending, uh, people that are watching this on, on TV or on YouTube, please, uh, please go by.
Ted, it's gonna be over thousands of people coming to view this.
Yeah, you're gonna need some police for that, absolutely. Uh, Mr. Nichols was speaking before, did I answer your question okay? There was one other thing you asked about, Mr. Sorbo, I can't remember what it was now.
Uh, the naming rights.
Oh, the naming rights, the naming rights were done by the hospital, you wanna speak to this Kathy, because I work for them?
Pretty much we went out. We went out for bid, so we, uh, they are the ones that responded, and they are paying, you know, a, a, an annual fee to the city for ten years to have naming rights, and they were the high bidder, and we're actually gonna use, they're gonna give, uh, predominantly most of that money upfront, and that money will be used in the purchase of the marquee, so that there'll be no expense to the city.
So the big marquee in the front will be like a, a very nice, modern, but digital type sign?
It won't say U-H-U-M-C on it.
No, it'll say, it'll say the theater, the Hackensack Meridian Theater at the Hackensack Performing Arts Center.
Yes, it will.
The naming rights, and they have it for ten, they leased it for ten years.
They'll have a Hackensack Medical Center on it?
Hackensack Meridian Health.
Just like when you go to any stadium.
That's naming rights on.
MetLife Stadium, I mean, that's, that's what you do, and you know what, they're paying for it, so...
It won't be on, they won't be banner like on the stage.
No, no, it will be, it will be part of the marquee that we're gonna be placing.
But they will be mentioned on the website as a sponsor, absolutely, because we have sponsors for this thing.
And we appreciate their financial support.
Absolutely. Beats paying for, beats you paying for it, right?
What's that?
It beats the taxpayer paying for it, right? Um, the Hackensack Outreach Collaborative, uh, meeting was today, it's a quarterly meeting done by the, uh, Human Services Department of Bergen County, it's held at the Bergen County Jail, we had a great showing today, it must have been about twenty people there, um, and a lot of different agencies represented, from the library to, you know, elected officials to, uh, police officers, we had, uh, our captain and lieutenant there, our officer in charge was there, did a great job, and a lot of different programs, we spoke about some of the drug issues, we spoke about, uh, you know, dealing with the, how the partnership, when it was created, of dealing with some of the homeless issues have, have made it so much better here in Hackensack, and, uh, with the merchants involved, the Main Street Alliance, it's really been a good collaborative, it's a great word for that, because that's, that's exactly what's happening. Um, yesterday I went to the nine eleven ceremony at Overpeck Park, uh, the county ceremony, was, uh, very, very, very moving, uh, every name of every county resident who passed away was read. Um, it, it's, it's, it was a somber day, it was, to me, when I got up in the morning and was outside, it felt like a very similar day to that Tuesday sixteen years ago, that same coolness crisp type day, and, uh, just reminded me so much, I, you know, as soon as I woke up, I said, wow, it's almost the same exact type of day we had. Um, you know, they say never forget, I'm concerned we're forgetting, you know, we're, this happened to us because we were complacent and kind of, uh, not paying attention, and I sure would hate that to happen again, and, uh, I urge everybody to never forget these days, days like this that happened to us, you know, there's a lot of, there was a young ensemble of, uh, kids playing music yesterday, and not one of them was probably born when this happened, and, uh, somebody lets, needs to let them know, just like our parents drilled into us about Pearl Harbor and all the other atrocities that have happened, we need to continue and make sure that generations that are out there now and that are coming never forget what happened in this country on, uh, September eleventh, two thousand and one. Um, some of you may be wondering why Deputy Mayor and myself were not here earlier, um, we took the liberty because it was a very important, uh, event in Hackensack, unfortunately the whole council couldn't go, and I want to thank the rest of the council for being understanding, and especially Deputy Mayor Canestrino for running the, the cast session. But, uh, over Riverside Square, they had a sixty-five-plus-million-dollar renovation going on, uh, and the theater is just opening, uh, they had a special, uh, preview tonight and a little party, and tomorrow they're opening to the public, but it's a beautiful, beautiful theater, it's incredible how, how cool this place is, you know, Hackensack was known for its theaters years ago, we had the Fox Theater and the Oritani Theater, I don't know if you guys remember that, but those were like, I remember going for a quarter on Saturday for a double feature, it was awesome, and me and my buddies used to go all the time. And that theater opened in nineteen thirty-two, I think it was, nineteen thirty-two, and it closed up in nineteen eighty, so it had a good run, had a good run, and then, you know, it's a part of me wishes they never knocked that building down, because that would have been a real good cultural arts center, but it wasn't a B, it was knocked down, and it's no longer exists, nor does the Oritani or any of the other two theaters that at one time existed in the city, smaller theaters, but, uh, this thing is a state-of-the-art, you've never seen anything like it, they've had a liquor license, uh, you can order your food, they bring it to your chair, uh, the chairs are recline, leather reclining seats with tables that swing out in front of you, it's, it's just amazing, and I didn't think the prices were all that outrageous for a theater, a show was like fourteen or fifteen dollars, which, you know, for something like that, I didn't think it was, was that bad, and, uh, it's a great addition to that mall, and I, I give a lot of credit to Simons, um, the people who run that mall, um, because they're rolling with the times, because malls are taking a little bit of a hit, believe it or not, because of internet sales, and this mall, instead of being just, it used to be you go there to shop and maybe get something to eat, it's an entertainment type of mall, they've got numerous, I think there's ten restaurants in here now, people go there to, to eat and then maybe shop, I think, and, uh, really, really, really a great mall. Um, school's back in session, let's not forget that, uh, be very careful with these kids out there, and, uh, we're going to look, Ruth, the Metzler's still here, we're going to look into that crossing guard situation, because the last thing we want to see is any children get hurt, and, uh, is, Mr. DePasqua still here?
No.
Um, I'm all for the city getting involved in promoting the heart program, and maybe we should do something online or on our website, looking for people to volunteer and, uh, get involved in that. Um, we all know there's a heroin epidemic, uh, not just here, across this country, um, you know, it's sad to hear that we had to use Narcan, but thank God we had it, all right, otherwise we'd be talking about three funerals instead of three people who have a second chance at life, so, uh, you know, I'm all for, for working with that, uh, you know, drug addiction's an insidious disease and should be treated as a disease, and we need to work on that. And with that, I wish everybody a safe trip home, and we'll see you in a few weeks. Thank you.
John, you better make sure that we're gonna go inside.
Oh, yes, we need a motion to, uh, go to closed session.
Second.